Counsel to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we will declare the agenda approved. Any announcements of anything upcoming that council members are attending? Anything, I mean, there's lots going on in the community, but the Bridgewater Farmers Market starts this Saturday down on King Street in its usual location. And they had a very successful food truck event a few weeks ago, and so the proceeds went to the farmers market, so we look forward to a successful and hopefully warm and sunny farmers market season. Bridgewater Elementary School Fun Fair is this Saturday. It's a go until 1:00? I can't remember. It's for sure in the morning. With the two schools.
Sea Cadet.
The Sea Cadet's ACR is at 2:00 at the LCLC. And they have their static displays that's open to the public. They'll have their drill routine and awards presentation. Anything else? There's a Relay for Life.
Relay for Life Friday night.
Friday night. Do you want to, do you have any more information for the public? Do you want to just?
The only thing that I know with the opening ceremony is at 7:00, and I believe it's up in the exhibition grounds. They chose it as a permanent location. The facilities are better, the bathrooms, everything is a better atmosphere, parking.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
The South Shore Gardeners Circle.
Yeah, the Garden Club?
Garden Club.
Garden Club is Saturday as well, I believe. Lots of events in the town of Bridgewater this week and this weekend. All right, our next, our first item is a Heritage Award presentation to Kirk and Amanda Wenzel for 39 King Street. I'll turn that over to Counselor Thorburn.
The Built Heritage Award was a partnership between the museum and Heritage Advisory Committee, and actually the friends of the Dead Precinct Museum. We're all partners in that. This is probably the fourth and fifth year that I can remember that that's been started. And I think our first one was Babylon Drapies was a business down on King Street for the paint and the work that they'd done to their property and keeping the heritage up. So tonight, I'm delighted to announce this year's choice of the Built Heritage Award. It's established by the Heritage Advisory Committee of the Town of Bridgewater in partnership with the Museum Commission, which recognizes the efforts of property owners in preserving the original features of the heritage buildings. This year, the award is for exemplary work on 39 King Street owned by Kirk and Amanda Wenzel. This 1877 home built in Gothic Revival style has been restored to its original condition with its wide corner boards, moldings, capitals, hook moldings over the windows. The gable ends have returned eaves and distinctive wide fascia and lovely laced window in the front dorm room. Some of the restoration work included the return of the main doorway to its original size with the transfer windows and hoods over the front windows brought back to the structure. Probably built by William Kent, husband of Abigail Hibb, whose father owned the original Hibb Grant in the Bridgewater area. Kent was well-known for host builder in the mid-19th centuries in Bridgewater. His son Fletcher Ambrose Kent was also a master carpenter who highly respected for his building skills and known for the building several structures destroyed in the Great Fire on King Street. He later built cars for Halifax and South Western Railway. We congratulate the owners of this home for their outstanding efforts to preserve the beautiful example of built heritage in Bridgewater.
Can I call Kirk and Amanda to come up, please?
And maybe you come up as well. We'll present this.
And the award says Town of Bridgewater 2017 Heritage Award presented to Kirk and Amanda Wenzel, 39 King Street, for working with empathy and awareness of historic structures as a sustainable result of preservation improvement of the Bridgewater Heritage Property.
Do you have any?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Thanks for showing up.
Thank you, Counselor Thorburn, for that presentation. Our next item in the minutes from May 14, 2018, regularly, regular town council minutes. Are there any town council meetings, sorry? Any errors or omissions in those? Hearing none, we will declare the minutes as approved. Are there, oh, I skipped delegations. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak as a delegation? No? Okay, we're going down to reports and recommendations. We have the 2018-19 First Intake for our Grants to Organizations as our May 1 intake. And so I will open the floor and turn it over, actually, to our Grants to Organizations Committee for their recommendations.
I move the town council of Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Grants to Organizations Committee and award grants for, for the May 1, 2018 intake period as follows. Second-story women's shelter, $250 for operating. Blue Nose Shuffleboard Club, $500 for operating. Blue Nose Coastal Action Foundation, $5,000 operating and $1,250 in kind. Bridgewater Curling Club, $2,000 capital. Michelin Social and Athletic Club, $5,000 capital. And Bridgewater Area Interchurch Food Bank, $3,000.
Thank you. Have a second or please, Counselor Thorburn. Any discussion on those items? No? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is Recommendation to CAO, Town Member Appointment to the South Shore Field House Society. And if you want to explain that one, because this is new for us.
Yes, so through the mayor to council, the Town of Bridgewater has had a long-term relationship with the South Shore Field House, HB Studios Field House, contributing greatly to the original capital campaign. A few months ago, the society came to council looking for some help towards ongoing financial sustainability and put a financial request to the town. Last week, council approved $25,000 contribution to the Field Host Society in the form of time for programming. So the intention is that we're working on integrating our recreation efforts with their facility. And so with that, we were invited to have a Town of Bridgewater appointment on the Field Host Society as a non-voting member. When we received this, I'm recommending that we appoint our recreation staff to this so that they can work on the details of integrating the programs that we identified there in the report last week. It would be, if it was the will of council, an opportunity, a council appointment would also be in order and may be more appropriate in the future.
Thank you. And as we work with recreation to be more collaborative and less competitive with the offerings around the, well, not just in-town, but in the community at large, I think this is a good opportunity for us as a, as a town to take the first step there. Someone prepared to make that motion?
Well, I would move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the CAO and appoint Diana Johnson Recreation Program Coordinator as a non-voting Town of Bridgewater representative to the South Shore Field House Society.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Deputy Mayor Tanner, any discussion on that? Pretty straightforward?
Question.
Question's being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is Tender 18-03E, three new trucks of various sizes. They're all pretty close in size. We're not buying teeny-tiny trucks, although I did check to make sure that they were real full-size trucks. Anyway, pretty straightforward. Tenders are there. Just out of curiosity, I always, when we buy a vehicle, I always go online and see if I can, like, build one. I need to go to the Ford website and see if I can. They're always, they're cheaper. But I just think that's, that's good housekeeping. Make sure we're getting the best price. So yes, the tenders came in lower than what I could have built online. Someone prepared to put that motion on the floor?
Your worship.
Counselor Thorburn.
I would move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of staff and award Tender 18-03E, three new various-sized trucks to GM Mosers Limited for the purchase of the following. Park Recreation and Culture, 2018 F-150 four-by-four, including tailgate step for a total price of $38,480.80, including HST, $34,823.18, including net HST. And Public Works, 2019 Ford F-250 four-by-four, including the tailgate step for a total price of $43,770.70, including HST, $39,880.80, including net HST.
Have a second or, isn't the, isn't the third truck really a PSC truck? So it really is for, for two, two trucks, not three?
Should that be amended?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're buying two trucks. Two trucks, okay.
Okay.
But for the-
I will second that amendment, yeah.
Thank you. But for clarity to the public, we are, this tender was, was put together with Public Service Commission because they do need a truck. So everyone's an agreement mover and, do we have a second here?
Yeah.
Do you second that? We're in agreement to change it to two trucks. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Recommendation of the Heritage Advisory Committee for designation of 613 King Street as a municipal heritage property. And for those who don't know, that is the old post office, and so very much an older building. Is someone prepared to make that motion and discuss it? Counsel Fager.
Yes, your worship. Send town council for the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to initiate the registration process with the province to designate 613 King Street as a municipal heritage property.
Can I have a second or please, Counselor Thorburn? Discussion, questions?
Just one question. I assume the existing owner of that property is in agreement with this?
Absolutely. We couldn't do without it.
That's my thought. I want to make sure. No, that's a good question, because with that comes some, some rules and restrictions.
We have rules and restrictions and regulations, and there'll be a plaque put on that property, and actually Kirk Wenzel, and will be working with us to install that. It's a nice plaque. I was going to have it up here tonight, but I forgot to pick it up, but it's, and I think that's the fifth one that we've done.
That was my question. How many have we done?
Yeah, the fifth one. And we moved on that pretty quickly.
Counselor McDonald.
How, how do those happen? Do, do homeowners come to the Heritage Advisory Committee, or does the Heritage Advisory Committee identify buildings that they'd like to see designated?
Well, we have right now about 35 to 40 that actually meets a criteria. And what we do is we pick some and go out and do some field work and contact the owners and go over the whole scenario with them and let them decide if they want to or not. Some do, some don't. And this particular one, we've worked on probably two years. So it's not something that happens very quickly, but we're very fortunate when it does happen because it protects our heritage in our downtown and downtown district.
Who is the owner of that property currently? Is it still?
Ken Anthony.
Ken Anthony.
Oh, okay. Still is, okay.
We're talking about the old post office for anybody that's wondering what.
Gotcha.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is Recommendation to CAO, Board Appointments. You're doing a lot of board appointments. Board appointments to Social Regional Enterprise Network. This is quite straightforward. There's some space on the board, and we need to get some things done, and so I believe we're, we're not the only one that's appointing CAO to the, to the board. I believe most of the partners are.
Yes, so right now, the, the board doesn't have enough appointments for quorum, so this is generally housekeeping. Many of the municipal units, all the Lunenburg ones, I expect, will be making their appointments over the next couple of weeks so that we can implement council's direction with regards to the notices of withdrawal, et cetera, in the near future.
Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater recommend that the RAN Liaison and Oversight Committee appoint Richard McClellan, Chief Administrator Officer for the Town of Bridgewater to the Social Regional Enterprise Network Board of Directors.
Can I have a second or please, Counselor Thorburn? Any discussion on that?
Question.
Question's being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Probably should just very quickly, this isn't a new news item for the public, but just so that, as a refresher, we've had discussions with the Department of Municipal Affairs and our colleagues down the shore. RAN, our Regional Enterprise Network is the largest geographic, has the largest geographic area in the province with, I believe, the smallest budget. And it just was not working. It was kind of unwieldy and large, and so we all, or most of us, agreed to, to withdraw in order to make some changes, and we're working with our partners to figure out what that is. So this is just to get that to move along, because as the CAO said, without enough members on the board, we can't actually make these decisions, so now we're trying to fill those. So that's just for the public's information. Our next item is mostly for information. It's the LCLC Ad-Hoc Committee Report. So this was a committee, a subcommittee of the LCLC struck. It was Counselor Ernst from the municipality of the District of Lunenburg, Greg Amos, who was a founding board member for the LCLC, and myself. The goal was to kind of see if we can break through a few of the barriers that seem to be in place as we work with the LCLC. So some of these are, just to hit some highlights, the first is dealing with the MOU. There's a number of pieces of this that have nothing to do with the building anymore, so there's a bunch of parts to it that have to do with the construction. Obviously, it's built, so we don't need those components. There's pieces of the MOU that have to do with other components like water supply to exit 12, and again, has nothing to do with the Lifestyle Center, but they tend to get in the way of our discussions. It's like a black cloud that kind of hangs over the head of the LCLC and our discussions with our partner, and it's not fair to the facility to have those tied in there. There's provisions in the MOU. For example, there's, there's a debt that sits on top of the building that the MOU state that every dollar of fundraising that comes in for the LCLC has to go back to the two councils to pay back that debt. Hard to fundraise for a facility when the money isn't actually going into the facility. It's going back to, to, to other governments. So the recommendation in that report is to, to deal with that debt in a way that'll allow fundraising to actually go, fundraising money to go back into the LCLC. And part of that is also dealing with having a legacy fund set up to deal with future capital repairs. Right now, there's no provision for that. And other items, probably the last one I'll touch on is, for example, the, if there's a surplus at the LCLC in their budget year, they have to give half of that to each council. So there's no incentive right now for there to be a surplus. And so this way, if we allow them to retain that surplus and it goes back into the facility, then there's some incentive to streamline and to make the, get the most bang for your buck. And so there's, these are the recommendations that the ad hoc committee is making to both councils. Some of these we've already dealt with. So we were a little quick on the draw. We dealt with this ahead of time, but I said this before when the LCLC passed its budget. It was probably the smoothest budget process we've had since that facility came into being. We're in a good place with our partner when it comes to the Lifestyle Center, and so this, the timing of this makes sense in order to move this forward. So that's there for your information, and it's public documented. People have questions. Are there any questions from members of council on that? No? Well, if you have any, you know where to find me. Business arising, unfinished business. We have second and final reading of Chapter 24, which is the Public Sewer Bylaw. Is someone prepared to put that motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the second reading of the amendments to Chapter 24 Public Sewers Bylaw as per Document 18-060 adopt as bylaw and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to Section 168 of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Can I have a second or please? Counselor Thorburn was first. Any discussion on that? This is the second and final reading, so it's already gone through its motions, so to speak? No? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And Policy 89 Fees. So as we go through all our bylaws, we're amending those to pull the fees out, put them in a policy so that we don't have to go through a first and second reading just to adjust fees. So if someone's prepared to make that motion, we can put the sewer fees in the policy. Thank you.
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the revised Policy 89-Fees to include public sewer charges as presented in Document 18-060 effective June 1 of 2018.
Thank you. Second or please, Counsel Fager. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We have an item, a land request for Small World Learning Center. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a presentation.
I'd like to declare a conflict of interest. My daughter attends Small World, and it could, certainly she would benefit from, from the use of additional land, so I think it's inappropriate for me to, to vote on the matter.
Deputy, you have a question?
I might have to declare a conflict as well. My nephew attends Small World Learning Center, and yeah, I wouldn't want the public to perceive it was a decision in one way or another. Sorry.
We do, we just have.
Yeah, we have.
Okay. One more.
Four.
No, we're good. All right. Most odds that is, I do appreciate when, when someone recognizes that they have a conflict or a potential conflict. Yeah, so we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago from Small World requesting land, donation of land adjacent to their property. We believe it's about 100 feet of frontage. And so I'm going to turn it over to CAO because if you want to elaborate on the report that we have in front of us, perhaps.
Sure. So, yes, so a couple of weeks ago, we had a written request as well as presentation to council from the Small World Learning Center for the Town of Bridgewater to donate via less-than-market value sale or lease an approximate 100-foot by 190-foot lot next to 352 York Street to the daycare to expand their outdoor play area and provide a property tax exemption on the donated land. Small World Learning Center serves approximately 125 children in our community. The requested parcel is part of a 19-acre PID owned by the town that's zoned and marketed for light industrial. The approximate value of the land that's requested is $23,000. There's been interest in the development of, along here. So definitely an interesting request. And, you know, we've had the local daycare provider requesting the donation of land. Outcomes of green space are very positive. The outcomes of children's play are very positive. We have policy in our municipal planning strategy and zoning for green space. In our planning strategy, we've made investments in trails, generations of active parks, in addition to efforts like take back the riverbank to ensure that the town enjoys its natural assets. So in this case, the land request, it is zoned and marketed as light industrial with demonstrated interest. It is reasonable to expect that this land will sell. The value of the land is, as I said, around $20,000, $23,000. And developed at highest and best use are comparable to what we're seeing on neighboring property. We could expect approximately $20,000 a year on commercial taxes on it. So before council is a couple of options. One, to proceed with a less-than-market value sale. There is a legislative requirement to do notice of motions and advertise and go through a public hearing, or a motion to retain the lands for economic development. Staff are recommending that we need the growth as we have limited supply of developable lands. These are serviced and ready to be sold. That being said, I recognize the value of the concept proposed and appreciate the innovative community building that's being done here. And as such, put forward this report to council for your deliberation.
Thank you. Any questions before we put a motion on the floor from members of council?
I guess the question, not knowing maybe the little, the background as to when Small World was first developed and the land was purchased, I know, and then they went and were granted a second piece for the addition back in 2016, was it? Sorry?
I can't remember.
Yeah. So did it have to go through the process of rezoning then? The land?
Did the, were the lands light industrial? My understanding that the lands used to be industrial and that they were changed to light industrial some time ago to limit some of the more heavy industrial uses, but I believe that it's been light industrial for a couple of years. A few years.
I hope our motion for just in discussion or nothing else.
Sure.
Based on the comments that the CAO has made. I move the town council of Town of Bridgewater deny the request from Small World Learning Center as presented in Document 18-069 for a donation of industrial parkland on York Street.
Is there a second or? Is there someone to second the motion? No? I'll ask one more time if there's a second or for the motion.
Motion's dead.
All right, so that motion is dead. Is someone prepared to put another motion on Or does council require more information? I understand the dilemma. It's not an easy, it's not an easy decision to make, because you want to, you want to help where you can help, and you want to be able to, especially when there's children involved, it's hard, it's hard to say no. But the flip side of that is, you know, when you read the report from the CAO, and we do have limited light industrial land, that area is being developed quite quickly, so there is an appetite on York Street to purchase lands. Tax revenue is always needed in our community. Small town Nova Scotia is not without its challenges, and despite the fact that we brag quite often about our growth, our growth is, we need our growth to be sustained, or we are in trouble. So it's, it's very difficult with both sides of that equation. Counselor Thorburn?
When the original request came in, your worship, they were talking not about donating the land, just having it like leased so they could use it, not a purchase or sell, just to use it. And they've been using it fairly frequently since they've been there. And I don't see why they couldn't continue to use that land until such time as it is sold, because they're doing it now. So I don't see the need to-
So are you proposing that, like, without any agreement, just use of the land until someone comes along and-
Absolutely. That could be three or four years down the road, and then we can deal with it at that time and give them free access to it like they have now, and I think it's a win-win for the community and for us, the town. And that's my personal preference.
I do believe we, we talked about that today, and I can't, that scenario. Did you want to just jump in on that one?
Certainly, if that's the will of council. My understanding is that in order to make the investment in the, in the path that's been donated, is they were looking for a commitment towards the lands. Certainly, the, the lands aren't programmed as parkland or whatever, but, you know, certainly I, I don't see a need to not allow the continued use of that land. I would probably follow up with a letter just covering off that, you know, we're not liable for, for, for that, for any activity on the land. But, you know, I think the status quo where the property's for sale is definitely an option. I didn't, I didn't, well, I guess that goes back to the first one, is to keep the property for economic development.
So that would, that would most likely impact whether the donation of, of material for a trail is, is done, just because without an agreement, you know, three weeks from now, someone could purchase that land and we would sell them that land. So that would change that, but it wouldn't prohibit them from using it. Counselor McGinnis?
I made, excuse me, I made the first motion because they are originally asking for a 10-year lease, I believe. And a 10-year lease would preclude development there for that period of time. Now, I suppose you could structure a lease to be, to cease if the land was sold. It's been my experience over the years that once you sign a lease for an organization such as that, and you, you know, you're, you're dealing with kids, good luck. You're going to look bad no matter what. And we're going to look bad here, because if you deny a request of this nature. But the fact of life is, we need the revenue, and if we have someone interested in developing that land, then that's what we should be doing. There are non, there are not-for-profit organizations. They do not pay taxes, and that's a substantial donation the town makes to, and I believe we're going to deal with another one here this evening with respect to a charitable organization for tax purposes. And I just think that, you know, it's, it's a tough decision, but it's a business decision that has to be made. You know, if we can develop that land and get tax revenue of $20,000 a year, I think that's- a year, I think that's what we should be doing.
Any further discussion, Councilor Fager?
I just wanted to say that I took the opportunity to go to the site the other day, and it's, I guess, I'm just curious, and I know right behind the property is kind of a wet, wet zone, kind of a little bit of marsh, but I guess, just looking directly behind there, if there was the opportunity, that's still town land, but I didn't know, the development there for potential sale, is that still marked as high-market area for the land directly behind Small World?
So the land behind, I believe, would be more difficult. That would require the installation of the Cook Road extension to get services to. I would say the York Street roads would be the, York Street properties would be the higher, you know, the better, the more marketable lands at this time.
So to your point, without the Cook Road extension, the lands behind, to your point, the lands behind Small World would be less likely to be developed down the road. But we're, but we're dealing with the request for the parcel on the side, so if there was another request or something, then we'd have to deal with that at the time. Councilor Thorburn?
There's that hundred by a hundred and ninety next to the Small World, then there's a street, and then there's another lot of land, if I remember correctly, that could be sold as well. And if you develop more than the lots that's on York Street, then that Cook Road would have to go through. And my understanding, through talk to the town engineer, that that was highly unlikely for the foreseeable future.
For the, for the back, behind?
Yeah. So, but still, the little lots in front may sell. But I'm still for leaving situation normal until such time as it changes through somebody trying to purchase the land.
Okay, so the question is, do we need a motion to do what we're doing now?
A motion to, yeah, to just not enter into an agreement? To me, it doesn't give any closure without having something in place. Like, I don't know if that helps, to not do anything. Maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, it's direction of staff. I'm not sure that it's, you know, and I guess the one improvement is, you know, we would be expressly permitting the use of the lands, which we haven't to this date, but it, it may inhibit the ability to attract that donation of the trail project.
So bear with me here. Does it make sense?
And as well, I would say, with that, is even if you're permitting it and somebody's allowed to put the trail in, I do think you're potentially making a decision for council in the future, because once you're developing something, it's...
So that's why I'm wondering if we're better with no motion and just, if there's no motion, then it is status quo.
Status quo.
Which is what Councilor Thorburn is proposing, is status quo. I'm just trying to find the cleanest path, so that everyone can move forward.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I guess I'm looking for some kind of direction to not give direction. So I don't know what the best, the best course of action. If we do nothing, if there's no motion, then it is status quo, I guess that is the answer.
Yeah, to do nothing, it would keep it like it is, for now.
So I don't, unless someone is prepared to make a motion of some kind, I don't think we have.
If we continue as status quo, is there the need to, for town to provide a letter for liability purposes?
The letter would just, yeah.
I'll have to. At this point, I can't, I know.
Yeah, so it'll be a use at own risk.
Yeah.
Letter, yeah. Any further discussion? Anyone else have a motion to put on the floor on this? No, so we've had a motion that died on the floor, and so it is status quo. All right.
Before we go, did Kirk amend, do you, were you planning to leave, or do you want to sit here and enjoy the whole council?
We're just, we're going to leave.
Okay.
Don't leave.
It's so much fun.
Feel free to leave if you really want to.
Plus, we're almost done. You might as well stay now. We're almost done.
I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that earlier.
No, don't let them leave. New business, proposed summer schedule and third meeting Mondays. Third Monday meetings, not third meeting Mondays. It sounds like Taco Tuesdays. I knew you'd laugh at that. So we traditionally do reduce our summer schedule down to the first and second Mondays of the month for July and August. In addition to that, for members of the public that don't know, on top of the nine to eleven committees that each member of council sits on, we do meet every Monday. The first and third Mondays are our discussion sessions, and they have an educational component to them, and of course, second and fourth Monday is televised council meeting here. We've just been getting a lot done in our first Monday discussion session, and while we wanted to reserve the third one for meetings with our MLA, MP at the time, our school board rep, some of those don't exist anymore, and some of those, the schedule's just not working out every third Monday. So the plan is to just kind of have that third Monday at when we need it. So as I said last week, don't make dinner reservations for six o'clock on the third Monday, but right now, it'll be kind of at the call of the chair. So is someone prepared to make a motion about the summer schedule and the, Councilor Fager?
That, yes, Your Worship, the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the proposed summer meeting schedule as outlined in document eighteen dash zero seven eight, and hold discussion sessions on July third and August seventh, and regular council meetings on July ninth and August thirteenth. And further, that going forward, meetings on the third Monday of each month be held as necessary at the call of the chair.
Thank you. Can I have a secondary, please? Councilor McDonald, any discussion? Nobody wants to meet more in the summer?
Thank you.
Disappointed. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Our last item is proposed revised chapter one ninety-two tax exemption bylaw for named, registered charitable organizations, and maybe if the CIO will just tee this one up for us.
Sure. So we received a request through the Bridgewater United Church to consider a property tax exemption for the daycare service location offered at eighty-seven Hillcrest Street. This matter came up as a change to the way PVSC assesses church daycares last year. So PVSC has now determined that these are not, these are not exempt, and as, however, under the Municipal Government Act, the Town of Bridgewater has ability to consider this as a, similar to the exemption that Small World receives, and can expand the property tax exemption bylaw to enable the exemption of property tax for the space where the daycare is located at the United Church and We Wisdom Nursery School.
And for clarification, this was exempt before the change?
Yes.
So it's a new, but not new exemption?
Yeah.
Anyone willing to put, make a motion? Councilor Thorburn, please?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the intent of the revisions to chapter one ninety-two tax exemption bylaw for the named, registered charitable organizations as per document eighteen dash zero eight zero, and proceed to second reading of the bylaw at a council meeting to be held on July the ninth, two thousand and eighteen, and authorize staff to public, all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Can I have a secondary, please? Councilor Fager, any discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And that is the end of our agenda. Let's not jinx it. That's a, that's a short meeting. Motion to adjourn?
So much.
Councilor Thorburn? Councilor McGinnis? We are adjourned. Thank you. And we do not have an in-cameras meeting.
We don't. We're done.